Everyone, the audience tonight, thank you all for being here. Just wanted to start off with a quick comment. No matter what the agenda size is in the future, we will definitely schedule a work session before. And the purpose of the work session will not only be to address the agenda items, but to bring up items that don't necessarily are not necessarily on the agenda for the meeting. So hopefully, when we get to the meeting on Tuesday night, we can do business of the city, conduct a business meeting, and move on. So hopefully, that's what we'll accomplish. I don't care if there's one item on the agenda or no items. We'll still get together before the meeting, just to get all the periphery out of the way. And tonight, Mayor, I get one question real quickly. Do you have the information on this piece of property that we're, or the road that we're talking about, trying to vacate, or is that something?
I have a copy that James just passed out. What was your question?
Just basically, just quickly describe what we're doing there when we get to it tomorrow night.
Okay. From what I understand, that's a property that was just recently, there was some rezoning done, I think on that green portion. Do you all have this?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That came through planning and zoning just a while back, and I think already to the council, and you all approved that at the last meeting, I believe. This is a request for vacating that portion of the road that ends into apparently the interstate. But said that there's no use, this property owner owns property on both sides of this portion that is highlighted there. Very similar to when we sometimes vacate an alley, or whenever you split it. The property owners, in this case, he owns both portions of that. There's really no public use for that. That's all I'm thinking about. If I tell you more, I might make it up.
Any questions? I mean, it's fairly simplistic. It's part of making that property, continuing to make it whole, as best I can tell. So that was the big purpose of both. Now, David purposely delayed you last time, so we could have a better discussion on the other issue, which is the Whistle Stop. So what do you have to put before us tonight, sir?
As far as the funding source specifically, I do not have a, you know, funding source specifically. It would be, you know, the same funding source that we use to move forward with the Chamber, basically a general fund. I don't have a additional source of money to necessarily pay for this, other than the general fund.
Now, during the discussion, that total of $7,000 was half in-kind, approximately?
Yes, the in-kind services is about $3,500, and about $3,500 for insurance. And that was based off a number that Bob Saunders gave me. I thought it was more like $2,000, but he said it was about three and a half for the insurance for it. So in-kind insurance, and then if we approve that, he will take the contract and renegotiate with the mayor as far as what services, Whistle Stop Festival, Foundation will be providing for the festival. There might be some things that may be a little scaled back because of, we've not, you know, done the $12,000, $5,000 short of what we historically have done for them.
One of the things, if I could just tell you, just like in-kind services, we have to quantify what we're spending if we're requiring our staff to work overtime, because we cut that basically out of the budget as a general. The police is easy, because most of those, they could just hire the police directly and know exactly what the cost is. I mean, there's, you know, police officers do off-duty service. And so those are easy to do. It's the fire and the public works that we'd have to calculate, you know, what the cost is. But I don't know, the police officers, I think it's $30 an hour, whatever the one rate is if they're, you know, doing security at Mercedes, or when they used to do it at Sands Club. That was all off-duty, and they were paid directly per hour that they worked, so. Just calculate what that is, whatever.
Okay. The only, you know, thing I voice about it, I'm still, you helped me get that six-month update stuck in my head, pretty much to know where we are financially. I don't know if Councilor Bearden had any comments in particular? That's the only hesitation I have at this point, is just not knowing where we're going to be at the end of that first.
Yeah, I can definitely appreciate the hesitation. I'm not a fan of where the, you know, where the funds are coming from.
Right.
By no means am I a fan of that. I think it's kind of like, it's historically reoccurring for 27, 28-odd years. I think that it would be, it would be a bad thing to not move forward with it, simply for the historical impact of it. It's kind of, from an analogy standpoint, I always told my wife, when we had our first kid, and I'm sorry, I'm just trying to give you an emotion. When our first kid was sick, and we had to pay for cough syrup for her throat, it was so effective that I said, "Honey, I will sell oranges on the freeway if I have to get this for her." That's kind of the way I feel about Whistle Stop specifically, because of its historical significance. I think if this is something we don't do, I think that we're gonna, I think we'll just kind of backlash for it. So I guess that's something we have to undertake, is are we willing to, are we willing to do that?
And knowing that rumor is out there persistent, that we will be getting some school requests again.
Yeah.
And knowing that we've already cut our employees out of what they just sort of received at Christmas, so.
Yeah.
It's just the type of things we have to consider coming down the road. And keep in the back of our minds, if by doing this at some point down the road, we have to do, heaven forbid, layoffs or other things, we've got to take into account what this may mean in the future.
Absolutely.
But again, you know me, let's put it on the table, take a vote for it, have a discussion, and we go forward from there.
That's the only reason I asked for you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bearden.
You mentioned the school request. Up until about four years ago, all of that money was donated by citizens. None of it was part of the city budget, and that was put in at Donna Pike's request when she was put in as chairman of the Youth and Education Committee. You know, that's, we could go back to that and just request the citizens to donate as they have in the past.
Well, we'll see. Like I say, I just throw that out, because I know that something, the smoothie, I think it was brought up the last meeting, actually. Somebody mentioned they had some requests coming forward.
I was the chairman of that committee when we first organized it, or reorganized it back in 2008, and that's all we had, was donations from citizens. And it came through the water bill, the garbage bill, mainly, and then the ladies that were members of the committee were real aggressive. They went to everything. They had set up, both at Whistle Stop, they went to the Spring Fest, they went to events at the senior center put on, the neighborhood meetings. They went to anything, they went to the ballgames, basketball games, and the football games, and set the table up and requested people to sign up. So they were real aggressive, and they even went everywhere. Even went to businesses and asked for donations. And that's where all that money came from at that point.
Hopefully, you know, again, let's focus on the Whistle Stop for tomorrow night, and then we'll see what happens when that gets placed on the agenda at some point. I guess the other piece of business that really is up for discussion tonight is the incentives for Simply Ten, as we're calling it now, is what's on our agenda. And Mayor, I think you had some additional information. We have two representatives in the audience, so.
Yes. This is information for you. This is, well, let me introduce to you Austin Engelberg. If you guys would just come on in front, and Mark Bernstein. This is what used to be called Simply Fashion, the building down there. They're reorganized. I'll let you tell your story, so I don't fabricate anything.
Yeah, it really boils down to, yeah, Mark and his brother Rodney owned Simply Fashion since 1991. And in 2012, they sold that company. They had, they were actually four partners, and Mark and Rodney was the principal owners. But the other two, there was some strong discussion back in 2012, and basically the bar's being sold out to the other two brothers. And if you guys know, by 2015, they had filed for bankruptcy. Rodney went into the real estate business after they sold, and Mark started his own store called Simply Ten. His first store was over in Western Hills Mall, and we grew from that one store, Western Hills Mall, to seven stores pretty rapidly. We went to Tuscaloosa, we opened in Five Points West, we opened in Monroe, Louisiana, but we have 41 stores now, since that time. And we have a store in Greensprings. You want me to go through the whole thing? Yeah, rather than just the history?
Yeah, give them a good overview of that context.
Okay, so in, so a year and a half ago, we opened a store in Greensprings, Alabama. We wanted to test a little bit different territory. And one of me, by that, Greenspring tends to be a little bit more Hispanic, and we wanted to go into that market and see how well we did. And it didn't do as well as our other 40 stores. So we decided, well, let's move that store to another location. And in the process of growing, the first store we opened in Western Hills Mall, we operated out of stockroom of that store. Shortly thereafter, when we moved, we bought the, we had seven stores, we moved into the basement of the Five Points West store. We operated there until we had 21 stores. In 2016, we moved into the old Simply Fashion building. It was still empty at the time. So now Mark is in the process of buying that building. It was in a Irondale Development Authority-type system, so there was no, there was no city taxes paid on that building. So now, with the process of Mark buying the building, we'll start paying some taxes on that building. So going back to moving the store, we said, well, we have, in part of your package, we have a Letterman tent to go into Birmingham side of the Old Eastwood Mall area in the Rainbow Fashion space, that's to the left of Walmart. So we have negotiated that Letterman tent, but in the process of Mark buying the building, we said, "Well, why don't we, Simply Fashion, back in the, back a long time ago, had a store in, it is a very small store, in the front portion of the office area." So why, because our stores now are in the neighborhood of 6,000 square feet, anywhere from four, we have some that are 11,000 square feet, and doing extremely, doing extremely well. So we're very excited about that. So what we wanted to do was maybe even open up a store in Irondale and put it back in front of the office area, rather than put it down at the Walmart building. So that's sort of where our proposal comes to today. So it's, there's a lot of cost involved in tearing out, in renovating an office space into that, you know, into retail, because the old store was only about 2,700 square feet. We have to tear out a lot of offices. And we want to spruce up the building in a little bit, in ways also. So if you look at your presentation, so first off, it goes, so does Simply Ten come to Irondale? A little bit, the first page is basically a real estate flyer that we use out in the real estate business in order to hand out to different locations. The second page is a list of all our stores, where our 41 locations are. We have stores in south as Jacksonville, Tallahassee in New Orleans, and as far north as Saginaw, Michigan, and Detroit, Michigan. We have three stores, we have eight stores in Detroit, three stores in Columbus, and then you see all the red dots from Memphis, Tennessee, Knoxville, Tennessee, to Florence, South Carolina, as far west as Shreveport, Louisiana. Our next page is basically a picture of, you say, what does a Simply Ten look like? Because we only women's fashions, women's fashions and accessories. So we carry clothes, everyday clothes, that sells for $10 or less. Now, back in the Simply Fashion days, Simply Fashion was any price, up to 20 bucks, even toward the end, when the other owners owned it, they were well above $20. Everything in our store, there's nothing exceeds $10. In fact, we're like the Dollar Tree store, where the people come up and ask the cashier, "How much is this at the Dollar Tree?" And it's like, "It's a dollar, you're at the Dollar Tree." It's really, in this case, everything is $10. The reason why it is funny that they ask this is because we have so many items that look like they're worth $20, $30, that we're selling for 10 bucks, so.
And we get people thanking us all the time for opening a store in their community, because we bring so much traffic to the community. We get paid every time we're at the store.
Mark, he is the, he's the merchant, he's the magic of the Simply Ten, because he's the one that chooses the items that we sell, which is, so that takes you through the first, the next few pages, as well as, we carry, like I said, we carry accessories, which includes lingerie, we also carry shoes. Part of what we even sold in the fall, we have boots, nice boots, for $10 in our stores. And that's some of the items they bring up, and say, "How much is this really?" So the next page really kind of shows you where the building looks at, looks like today.
With the sign blown out.
Yeah.
And walk it out the way it is.
Right. So the next page shows you a little bit of what we want to do to the building. We want to go in blacktop, we want to do restriping, add some landscaping, cut some hedges down, definitely put in the new Simply Ten sign up on that big, the pole and the pylons are already there. We need it painted, cleaned up. We want to add, at the top of the big building, there's a big canopy up there where we can put the big grand opening sign, as well as have a permanent sign there on the front that says Simply Ten. And we want to call it an outlet store, only because we thought the outlet store would bring some extra attention, because there will be some unique items that this store will carry, such as samples and other things that may not make it to all the rest of the stores. So we wanted to make it a destination point. Just to show you, I wasn't making up anything. We do have the Letterman tent, that's your next two pages, from the Eastwood Village down at the, down at the Walmart Center. And it's signed by the landlord on the second, on the next page.
And it's in moving condition, we don't have to do anything to move it.
Yeah, the previous retail, yeah, they like to check out the dressing room there, everything else, and we don't have to do any work, that's true.
This Letterman tent says, it's dated January the 18th, the 8th of 2017. Is that a misprint?
That is a misprint. Yeah, it is a misprint, yeah. That's this year.
We can get you a copy of it.
Well, we have the email, right. So the next page basically says, what we're doing is, we've got construction costs of almost $200,000, besides what we want to do to the outside, and what we need to do to the inside, to make a decent retail, to build a box, the retail space, compared to office space that's there today. So if we could get half that, you know, I think if we did 2% of the sales tax, if we could retain that, to at least, you know, to get half the cost of the outfit. And this, and below kind of gives you a list of all the items that we're spending the money on. The highlighted yellow is, it will be exterior money paid. And then we will employ 8 to 10 people, you know, for our, at our location. The last few pages kind of show you what the condition of the space is up front now, and shows you the small store that used to be there. And then the last page shows you the approximately 6,000 square feet that we will have as a retail store.
And we bring a lot of traffic also. So the rules, they'll benefit from us opening, because we have, how many people come this way? How many people faces we're showing to us?
At least, at least 200, at a typical store.
Is that per day?
Per week.
Per week.
Per week.
You know, our typical store does about $700,000 a year, and we're looking at this store to do $500,000.
And you say that you're going to open a store at the Eastwood Village also?
No, 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 no. We have, it's a choice at this point. We can either go down to Eastwood Village, or we can open a store here in Irondale.
Now, you'll have, I know that store is still set up warehouse-wise. Will you still be using some of the warehouse capability?
We're currently using the warehouse portion.
I've noticed the traffic, so that's.
Yeah, yeah. So we're using the warehouse portion now, to satisfy the needs of our 41 stores.
All the freight is delivered into there, we install it, and we ship it out. Do I still question that?
Mayor, you apparently had a look on your face.
Yeah, no, I was just kind of, once you're done, all their questions, I'll fill you in on a little bit of the background detail.
Any other questions for us?
No, you did a good job breaking it down. Thank you.
Councilor Bearden, you're still staring at that one?
Yeah, I'm still staring at it.
It's flipped.
Yeah, I see it's backwards. I figured that out.
Yeah, I saw that, because that's a per day.
Are you seeing, because at first I was like, was it circling in the back?
Mayor, did you have a vision?
It's been several years since I've been in that building. They took us on a tour when it was Simply Six, back, no, seven, eight years ago.
That was more than six or eight years ago, that was six months.
No, I think my brother invited a bunch of city council members.
Yeah, they took us for lunch, yeah.
Yeah, I knew it. That was, we were Simply Fashions at that house.
Was it Simply Fashion? I thought it was.
It was Simply Fashion. In 1991, we were Simply Six. And then from there, we transitioned very quickly to Simply Six Fashions.
I'm sure you all, when I go into women's dress shop, that's it.
And I think I was also there, too, for that lunch. Yeah, I've been working with the Farsted Brothers for a little over 30 years, so.
Okay, so to reiterate a couple of things, and fill in a couple of blanks here for you. When we first talked, you know, they indicated they'd like to move, or open the store back up there. They're using the warehouse space, as they said. They have an option if they choose to exercise it, to go in space by Walmart there. This obviously has some appeal to them, because they're using their own space, as opposed to renting somebody else's space. So we talked about, which is where these numbers come from, we talked about what their overall budget would be for getting this up to speed to open the retail space, approximately $200,000, just slightly less than that on this proposal. I talked about, what we had talked about in terms of just general parameters of sales tax rebate as incentive for new business coming into the area over a defined period of time. And so their request initially was for that incentive, the sales tax rebate incentive, which is roughly $100,000. I think we calculated that that would, your projection would take about five years. Could be up to seven.
Well, the thing was, is if it was five years and we only did half a million dollars, then it would be only be, it would basically be $10,000 a year, or in this case, $50,000. So if we spread it to seven, we would have a better chance of recouping the 97. That's the reason change from your office.
All right. So, yeah, I was just trying to do the numbers in my head.
Yes, sir.
So I also suggested to them to spend some money on the exterior. They have some here, that is one of the parts, as you all know, in our comprehensive plan, speaks about the gateways to the city, the entry points. This is one of those entry points. When you come off the interstate, you see, that's what you see, is that building. And so to spend some effort and some funding to do that, we even talked about an additional amount of about $50,000 to paint the entire building. They didn't feel like, I think, I don't want to speak to them, but didn't feel like that they could front that money, or that it would take too long for them to recoup those funds. So that was, that was not in here. It's, you see the highlight, they did a good job highlighting what is exterior, what the change will be there. And roughly, you can see what it would look like in the picture there. I was thinking more, quite honestly, I was thinking more like, I sent them to look at Hyatt Poten, and how that building was done, I mean, it just looks unlucky, and everything. But what I didn't send them to, to look at, was Marathon Electric. If you've seen how they redone their building, I mean, it's just a whole, when you come down that street, that's what you see, and it's really quite amazing, the difference there. But those are, those are just business decisions, you know, whether it's worth to them to invest that and recoup that over the next five to seven years, or not. I was, like I said, I would be willing to up that amount to get that additional exterior look at a higher level, but I'm comfortable with this proposal as a base proposal, if that's what you want, or okay with. So that's how we arrived at where we got to today.
So we have a contract of any kind put together yet?
We do not. I wanted to run this by you, and then once, you know, the council, and I know you can't make a decision tonight, but you can make a decision, and we can work out the details of the agreement, or we can work out the details of the agreement, as long as we know what your questions or concerns might be.
I'm good with it, except I'd like it to take seven years, or the 92, 84, whichever comes first.
Yeah, we're prepared for that.
Right, we talked about that. If they said, if this store produces 750,000 a year, then that plays out quicker. It is also that sales tax rebate contingent upon not just numbers on the page, but what they actually spend in terms of rehab and revitalization of the property. So if they get, you know, they come in, and they're pleasantly surprised, and one of these items is half the cost of what they've estimated, then they need half. I mean, it'll be reduced to that amount, so. As for their benefit, get the best price, as well as to the city benefit.
Well, I hope y'all make a million dollars a year.
We hope so, too.
Let me ask you this question. So the 97 is not really a hard figure, because they may come in with some figures that are much lower than the 195. And then if the 195 is much lower, then that means that the 2%, or the percentage that they're requesting, would be lower.
Well, the percentage would stay the same, but I mean, it'll be a share. I understand what you're asking. We should, a split on the sales tax to what they actually spend, half of that.
Well, the reason I was asking that question, because based on the amounts that they have here, it would take 14, about $14,000 a year for seven years to recoup the 97. And $500,000 in sales wouldn't get you back to that amount, because that's only $20,000, which half of that is 10. So you would be short $4,000 for seven years, which would be $28,000. So that's why I was asking that, because you would have to increase your sales projections to be able to hit that amount, to be able to get the full effect of the.
And we're hoping we underestimated the sales.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're hoping, because our average store is, like Mark said, is 750,000. We have, we have a couple of stores that do over a million dollars. We're just not sure, you know, what this doesn't include is cost of inventory. It also doesn't include advertising, what we plan to do for the location, because it is kind of out of the ordinary, as a retail. But we're hoping, based on outlet store, and we want to talk that up advertising-wise, we hope that we can get better sales.
I just want everybody to know, based on those numbers, in seven years, you wouldn't, you wouldn't get your target. And if you all would be okay with that.
And we are okay, yeah, we are okay.
And we're taking a risk, because we don't know how it's going to do. Most of our stores are in a center with a grocery store.
We're in the Walmart Centers.
Yeah, we're always next to a major.
Yeah, you're kind of isolated.
Yeah, we're taking a risk, but we're just hoping that with the visibility of the 459, and, you know, that.
20, yeah.
With the advertising that we plan to do.
Now, the other side of that, that somebody will probably ask, what would that mean potentially in actual bottom-line taxes to the city if we negotiated this deal?
Well, it would be 2% of whatever they sell.
Okay, so.
And then eventually 4%.
Yeah, I'll go to the, yeah.
Like James said, it would be approximately $10,000 a year.
Yeah, if they sold a million, we would get 20.
And then after seven, we'd, it's double.
Just to make sure, because that question will probably come up, because we don't have everybody here tonight.
Obviously, we have a contract that sets the limits of seven years, and, or the amount of money. Whichever comes first, I'd say yes.
Do we have something in the form on this resolution that we could do tomorrow night and move forward? Or do we need to do some tweaking of the resolution to open the parameters for the contract?
I'd like to see a contract first.
Well, I would say, because this follows up. Well, I would say, because this falls under seven seventy-two, it's gonna have to go before the courts and be validated anyway. For, basically, the city's gonna have to sue themselves for it to be, for the courts to say that it's okay, so we don't have any bounce back. So I don't know where's the rest, whether you wanna work that through in the contract, or you just wanna go ahead and file the validation, or let the validation, uh, play itself out with the.
I think, yeah, before getting to the validation point, there would need to be a contract that is signed to all parties, or else we, you know, it's not firm that all parties agree to what that is. And I hadn't been working on it, but it's my understanding that the contract is not there yet, is that right?
No.
So we don't have a contract for approval for tomorrow night.
You're seeing the first one, this is all we have right here, so.
I'd be good.
I wanted to get them to you as quickly as I could.
That's, that's great.
This was the first opportunity.
I'd be good to table it this week and then bring it back next week when we've got a contract to look at.
Well, what we've done in the past, you can approve it in principle, and then bring the contract back to the council for final approval, instead of having to wait another two weeks to try to put all of it together.
So as long as we got a contract before final approval, we don't have a problem.
Yeah, that's the language you can put in a resolution.
Yeah, you would have, you would need to have the deal put together, you know, structured for your final approval. So I agree with what James is saying, if you want tomorrow night, now I had to say what the resolution says, but if you wanna pass the.
They have to create a license.
Yeah, come on, man.
Approving the theory, you know, it's kind of a non-binding resolution, because you might change your minds, we might not have a meeting of the minds when, you know, we put pencil to paper, you know, for sure. But it certainly would at least give them and us and our marching orders on which all are willing to put together, and then we can put it together and bring it back to document for council.
I, I don't have, I don't have. They're comfortable in proving as soon as, and, and not have something in writing to say what they are.
You said that, and I haven't said that, James, is there something we can do to modify this, to consider the wording we need for tomorrow night?
I mean, basically, you're just improving the, uh, tax incentives over a certain period of some final approval of the council.
Contention time, final approval.
Let's get the wording on the final agenda that we're gonna use tomorrow night, just to make sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, please. But, uh, definitely wanna keep it moving forward, I think it's intriguing, it's what we've talked about being able to do, and we'd like to move forward, makes sense.
Great, thank you.
And where's your timeline on doing this at this?
We wanna get started as soon as possible, we love to get, get reopened, you know, get, get for Easter. And I know that's only a few weeks away, but we're, we're prepared, we have a lot of things lined up. That's, that's the reason why I'm glad to hear you say that you're willing to go ahead and, and, uh, talk to us tomorrow night as far as giving us something to say, yeah, we're gonna lean your way.
Mm-hmm.
So we can, uh, we can go ahead and.
Well, I think as long as, as long as we agree, or the council agrees in concept, then we can work the details out, I mean.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, Easter, Mother's Day, and Fourth of July are probably our biggest, our biggest seasons, even bigger than Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Will you write, will you all write the contract? Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll talk it up, and it'll be approved by the council, and you agree or not agree.
I agree.
I'm aware of that. No, and, and what they were talking about, the court issue is, it's routine, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's something we have to do, cause we're giving you, as a product company, public benefit.
Okay.
But we have to show off benefits, so.
We, we, we have to sue ourselves, so we can ensure nobody else will sue us in the same thing.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, um, and that note, uh, don't have a very large audience, but any comments from anyone?
Just to kinda extrapolate on David's thing about the historic thing of Whistle Stop, it's also the premier event we have in the city. And, you know, last year, we had over three hundred vendors, and over nine thousand people come to the city and participate in the, uh, in the event. I mean, it is a, it's, it's the showcase of the city, I mean, when people come here, they check out, check us out and say, you know, this is a nice area, this is pretty nice, you know, that we've got these, they've got this festival going on here. And then they see the neighborhoods and stuff downtown, uh, and, uh, you know, it's, it's just something that, you know, we need to continue on. Uh, even the Jazz Fest brings, you know, folks to the area, um, but it's, it's something we need to, you know, if, if, if we as a city can't do it because of our budgetary stuff, you know, the citizens need to step up and, and assist with this offset. So, you know, if you just can't get past, um, I know that there are several people out there that are willing to start some type of, uh, fundraising, uh, solution to bring to the city, so the city can cover those in-con services and assist with the insurance payments.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention, um, I think many of you know that I'm originally from Texas, but I've been here eleven years, and so I think the thing that, that puzzles me, uh, in Texas, when there are all kinds of festivals, like the Armadillo Festival, the Watermelon Festival, things of that sort. Those organizations approach the city and actually pay the city to lease various space, things of that sort. They don't go to the city asking for the city to fund, subsidize their festivals. They actually compensate the city for being able to do it, and they're on their grounds. And so I'm just wondering, after twenty-seven years, they have not been able to fund themselves totally to put this thing on, where's all that money going after twenty-seven years? That's one thing that, that, that I, one question, and then the other question is, why are all these groups coming to the city wanting money, when they should be footing the money and actually paying the city to be allowed to put these things on? So that was one thing in regard to the festival, and then with simply ten, the only thing that I, question I ask is, are there any plans to open up any more, any more of these stores around the Birmingham area, or Trunkville, or Hoover, or anywhere around?
No, no, there's not.
Okay, I was just wondering about that.
Thank you.
Hey, Cindy, are those festivals in Texas, are they, uh, do you pay a fee to get into them?
Uh, no.
They're, they're probably, I mean, they're publicly events that.
Right, public events, and there's no fee to go in.
Thank you, everybody, for their comments. Uh, Mayor was gonna be kind enough to cover a few issues that were brought up at the last meeting, with questions about paving and others, but the person that put those on the floor is not here tonight, can't receive a response.
I'm prepared, if you want, I'm associated.
Well, would you mind just going over them real quick, if we can get that, at least on the record for tonight?
Yeah, so there were several questions asked last time, uh, and I said that I would report that to you this time. Uh, one was for a, a request for a garbage update, on the changes from the garbage and cost savings, and how is it working, and that sort of thing. Um, and I've gotten with Frank, he can get into details, but, uh, to give you the overview on that, the new system's working very well, in our opinion. Um, it, it is almost precisely like we predicted in terms of the savings, the extra stuff that we could do, um, getting all the garbage still picked up, uh, that sort of thing. And even the complaints being down, doesn't mean that someone doesn't complain occasionally, but, but, um, nothing, nothing significant there. So it's working very well overall, um, the measures are beginning to translate into cost savings for us, I'll give you a couple of examples of that. We, wear and tear on the vehicles, but meaning the garbage trucks, we save half of that, because we're running half the number of miles. Uh, actually, approximately twenty-eight thousand miles a year that we're saving on putting on the vehicle, uh, which translates into wear and tear, and having to replace it, depreciation, and all of that stuff. We didn't get dig down into what those numbers are, but, but to tell you that of what we would normally utilize, we've cut that in half on, on wear and tear. Uh, on fuel savings alone, we estimate, uh, his calculations of comparing to six months to the prior comparative period of six months, um, sixteen hundred and twenty-one gallons of fuel. We're currently, during this time period, we estimate that the average cost of that was two dollars and six cents a gallon. Uh, but again, a significant savings on fuel for that six-month period. Um, beyond that, we're keeping the city cleaner, uh, according to Frank, they're, they're, they're able to do a lot more than what they were currently doing. Our deal is always have a reputation of being a clean city, and keep your stuff, uh, cleaned up, and litter picked up. Uh, it's been more of a struggle over the past several years with, with reductions, you know, not as many people actually doing that. This has freed up people for us to do it, uh, two extra people, um, on, on Thursday, where we would have one person actually picking up litter, we've got two extras that can work on that. Uh, we've been able to patch more potholes, repair it, so, this is some of the things that these guys have done, once they've been freed up from having to run that extra two days. Um, patching more potholes, repairing sidewalks, pruning the alleys, replacing signage, and cleaning storm drains, are just some of the things that those staff have been, been deploying on. So, that's question number one, and, and, and all opinions from this side of the, the, the house, uh, we say that it's working remarkably well, and we're making significant progress. We're doing more, and we're saving, uh, costs, so, I don't, you know, not much, much to be argued with there. The second question I was asked was about leaf pickup, particularly from the person who asked it, Councilor Wilson, Holiday Gardens area. Uh, my answer on that is, we pick up leaves in every neighborhood, not just Holiday Gardens, but every neighborhood. Uh, the leaves must be bagged according to ordinance and placed at the curb, and I'd say, if that is done, then we pick them up. Uh, not aware of any situations where that has not occurred. Now, the follow-up question on that, not, I don't know that he asked it, but my follow-up question on that, well, what about the leaves at the street, you know, in the gutter? That is an issue, and that is a problem, it's not just an issue and a problem in Holiday Gardens, it's an issue and a problem in every neighborhood that has gutters and have, or storm drains, and has trees, which is virtually every neighborhood in our city. Um, we'd be happy to do that, we'd be happy to have the equipment to be able to do that. Some of the work that these guys are doing on the garbage crew manually with a shovel and a rake, is cleaning out some of those gutters where those leaves get into. There's obviously a limit to, to your time and effort, that you can make progress on that, but they are doing it, they're doing it manually, because we don't have the equipment to do it. We're utilizing an eighty-six model, we're utilizing an eighty-six model truck to run as a leaf truck, and a nineteen eighty-four leaf machine, and there's nothing on it worth repairing at this point, it is done. Uh, they patched it, they've band-aided it, they've wired it up, put duct tape on it, whatever they needed to do for the past probably decade, uh, rebuilt it, and, and it's just, it's shot and it's done. We'd love to have one, I saw one, uh, one of the associations had a, had a, um, an event recently where they showcased their equipment, Gardendale, um, was up there, I'm sorry. And for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, we can get a, a new leaf truck and machine, uh, and, and one that's much, much more practical than what we have. The one we have currently takes three people to operate it, uh, the new one takes two people to operate it. So you've got a person, uh, in the operation of that, by the way, it's designed, but it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We don't have that till we get in the position where we have it, we'll still pick up, bag the leaves, and we'll still, as we have the manpower, we'll get out there with the rakes and the shovels and clean out the storm drains one by one. But, um, but we just don't have the equipment right now to do what, what we would like to do. So that's on the leaf pickup. Uh, on the potholes, and the question was asked particularly on Scenic View, as we all know, Scenic View has some of Arndale and some of Birmingham, the ones in Arndale, we, we are responsible for, and we patch them as we do. Any other potholes that are reported to us, or that we're, we're made aware of, that we see, uh, so, so if we see some, aware of some, let us know where they are, and we'll make sure that they get patched. Uh, we, we repair them, um, like I said, whether we just see them or whether someone reports them, um, they're doing a better job at being able to get to those than they were before we changed the garbage ordinance, so, cause we've got more staff that can do that. That's one of the things that they spend that time on, um, and, you know, when you patch potholes, there's a reason the pothole was there to begin with, and it's eventually gonna be repatched and repaired again. So, uh, but we're, we're working on those, and again, not, the question was asked about Scenic View, but not just Scenic View, your neighborhood, my neighborhood, wherever they are, is where we, and we're aware of, is where we patch them. Um, we'll keep, we'll keep doing that, um, Scenic View is a little bit of a, you know, it's kinda like Roughner Road, there's parks or different tourist stations in there, and so sometimes we get blamed for litter on Roughner Road, when we've spent a lot of time picking it up. You can tell where Arndale is because of that, um, same way with potholes, sometimes, if it's ours, we fix it, if it's not ours, we have to leave it for someone else. Those were the questions that were specifically asked, and the other topic that was brought up was the amusement park, uh, at Greensville Station, we are working on that. We cannot, have not been able to make contact with whoever is the owner of that, uh, someone said he's out of the country, I don't know, uh, but we've not been able to have a conversation with the person, but we have sent staff up there. We're looking at it, and, and I told them today to shut it down, now, that, that's kind of, that's kind of futile in a sense, because there's nothing going on there. So when you shut it down, you don't really, you don't really make a whole lot of progress. Uh, for electrical reasons and the fact that we've learned that they have not purchased the building, I mean, of, of a business license, uh, I haven't gone back to see how far they've not done it, but they've not done it, and so they don't have a license to operate. Uh, there's some like electrical issues that have been identified that, that, uh, need to be addressed, and until they can address that, and then we'll have to figure out, if they just refuse to come in and address it, how we can get it cleaned up. I mean, that's a little bit of a legal question, but we know that without having a business license, they can't operate, and we know that if it's unsafe, they can't operate. Um, so that's where we're at on it, so I, I, I think, I think we can make some progress on that. Um, we've gotta get a lot of person to talk to, to, to figure out what their intent is and what their plans. That's all I, well, I have one other thing, just, uh, and this kinda ties back up into the garbage, but it was unrelated to the change. Uh, Frank also negotiated, renegotiated, uh, the agreement we have with the landfill, um, a while back, about six months ago. And to give you the numbers on that, uh, in the last six months, and we're essentially the same amount of garbage, actually we've added some new neighborhoods, um, as you know, and so we've taken on a few new customers, but no reduction in the amount that we're picking up, actually an increase. Uh, with that renegotiation of those fees, the last six months, we spent sixty-eight thousand dollars on landfill fees, and the prior six months that we compared to, we spent ninety-four thousand, so it was saving, so thirty, thirty, roughly thirty thousand, thirty, thirty-four thousand. So, um, that's all I have.
How was, um, how was recycling going from a participation standpoint, and I guess how much stuff we're, we're moving?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't ask him about the volume of that, I mean, I see the blue bins out.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty consistently, I was through one neighborhood today, and it looked like probably two-thirds or three-quarters of the people have, have guns out.
Right.
And go like, uh, I don't think the volume has been necessarily that much, but I, I can check that and see what, what that is.
I'd be curious, so it's volume, and, and if, if more recycle, recycling, people are starting to do it, I'd be kinda curious, cause I think in the past, we've paid some fines for contaminated stuff, people not washing out stuff the way they should.
Yeah, I'm not.
Maybe not removing plastic film to a cardboard.
Yeah, I've not heard anything recent on that, but I can ask some follow-up questions on that. Um, you know, you hear, you hear stuff on Facebook, and we all know it's gotta be true if it's on Face, of course, but, uh, a little bit of, a little bit of grumbling, you know, about when a holiday falls on the money, but I'm telling you, that is the perfect, that, that, that was the best plan we could make like that, because it allows us to do all these other things. And so the four or five people that grumble about that, I, I'd say just let them grumble, you know, uh, it, it doesn't kill anyone to wait two weeks, I mean, you know, what if you didn't have it at all? What would you do, you know, which is at one point where you were at, you know, looking at it, so, I, I, you know, I think the system is, is structured really pretty well right now to do what we need to do. I can check on the volume on it, I don't, I don't know what the volume is, but, um, I mean, I don't put fine out every week, cause I, you know, I don't put my garbage out every week, and even with one-day pickup, but.
Yeah.
Put it out when I need to, and I have enough of it. Some people, I just can't imagine how some people generate so much garbage, but, um, it happens, so.
I also would definitely be curious about if we're, for paying any fines for things not being recycled properly, um, just if we need to have a little edification lesson, then we need to do it.
Yeah, I'll ask some more questions about that, I, I've not heard anything typically over here, if there were some problem, but.
Right on.
But I'll ask.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions for the mayor if I could.
Please. Go ahead, please.
When you were talking about the creeps, Grantsville Road between Mercedes Plant and Old Leeds, you've got two or three different places where the road's been torn up. And I assume now, as I said, assume that it came from the construction of the Mercedes. Any way we could get the contractor to repair those places in the road there?
We, a couple of things on that. We, we raised that issue early on because we assumed that also. The problem, the problem of assuming is, well, you know.
Yeah, that's why I.
The, the problem is proving who is responsible. And so a truck driver says, I'm legal. I'm carrying the right amount of weight. I'm on the public highway. If your road's deteriorating, it's not my fault, you know, because I'm, I'm rated for what I'm doing. So we don't have any, I don't think we have much of that. The good news on that territory, I think, is the county is moving fairly rapidly toward beginning to work on that. So I don't think you're, you're not going to see a lot. You'll see minimal repair to get it through to a new resurfacing kind of rebuilding. I think there's more likely going to be relief.
All right. Second thing is, we've got a company called Gray's Tree Service over there that's got a dump site at the end of Clayton Street in Alton. And they're continuously tearing up Johnson Road, Spring, Johnson Street, Spring Street, and Clayton. You know, we had, four years ago, I guess, we had them repaired. They came in and filled in the places where they're torn up, but it's all torn up again. Clayton's the worst and Spring Street, where Clayton and Spring meet, they make that turn. And of course, a huge truck full of lumber, timber is just tearing up those roads. And is there anything we can do? You know, I'm not even sure they're, you know, in the city of Iredale, but they have to go through Iredale.
Are these streets in Iredale that you're talking about?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
In fact, Jason Wiggins, my brother, lives on Johnson Street.
And that is Iredale?
It is Iredale. Johnson Street, Spring Street, and Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N, Street, they're all in Iredale and Alton. And Gray's Tree Service is just tearing up those roads. And it's a continuous thing. At the top of, the top of the hill at the end of Clayton Street, they've got, they got their dump site. They own it and they're filling up the hollow back, back there with lumber, with trees they've cut down, brush and so forth. And it's just a continuous mess tearing up the roads.
That, that sounds a little easier to get past the question that we're just talking about on Grantsville on is this really being caused by this entity or these trucks or is it just, you know, from regular usage? It seems like that's a little more clear. I'd be interested in looking at what happened a few years ago. That there was a repair that, that was done.
I've, I've been over there, so trucks come through and follow them up the hill to where they dump in, come back again empty. So I know, I know they're dumping in there probably over, overweight. And they're tearing up the roads.
They agreed four years ago that they were the problem. So that's why they went ahead.
But they haven't done anything since, since we've made them fix it that time. I said, I don't know that they've done anything since we made them fix it that time.
It's probably time to reach out to them again and maybe I can get the documents from what happened three years ago to be accepted already.
I don't think there was a resolution or anything. It was more of.
Tommy Joe negotiated a fix here and everything.
Had a conversation with them. They agreed and did whatever they needed to do. But I will go back to, it had to be, because I was on the council end, so it had to be around twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve.
There was another, you mentioned that's bill. And I think there was a little issue there going into prices development that he's doing. And we did have that conversation with the contractor and they're supposed to.
You're talking about that turn lane?
Well, the, the turn lane's a whole different issue, but right there at the turn lane. And they're supposed to, at least on the entrance part, wind back into there, supposed to come back. And we do that. But we, we agreed to, say, break until the construction's done.
Yeah. The, the turn lane that we, the city had installed, we spent over, I think, a hundred thousand dollars for that. It looked like shoddy work.
Yeah, we won't be using that contractor again. We made them come back once, but still, you know, probably didn't make them come back enough. But I was not happy with it either.
Mr. Fisher.
Has anything been looked at at the electrical and the lighting on the hillside going up to the gorilla?
The electrical certainly, they, they've looked at, you know, just peering through and, and over. That's one of the bases that we were going to shut them down. I don't know about whether it's connected to the lighting or just the stuff that's running across the ground. But, but that was, the two points that we said we would shut them down was the electrical concerns over safety and not having a business license.
So, so that business put the lighting up that faces up the hill, that wasn't the owner of the.
Uh, that I don't know. That's what I said. I don't know if it's connected to the lighting. I mean, we saw enough, we saw enough just peering through the fence that, that we needed to address it with them.
From what I understand.
I don't know specifically about the lighting, who's that is.
Yeah, from what I understand, if you go, if you climb with that hill and look at that stuff up there, there's cables laying across the ground.
Yeah.
On that hill, hillside and stuff and everything.
Somebody stole the man, the hanging man.
Thank goodness.
He's a little harder to hide.
Any other comments?
Do you have one question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, someone reached out to me of the, the, the construction that's being done by Spire on Sixteenth. There's a few people that walk that area. It's kind of a loop. I guess there's, and I haven't looked exactly for this particular trash can, but apparently there's a trash can that people can drop stuff in as they walk that loop. I guess the trash can that we make available is in the construction side of things. So somebody asked if we could basically just move that trash can from the construction side of the sidewalk just to where people can actually use it as they're walking the path.
I'll just have to look at it.
Yeah, no, you're fine. It seems, seems simple enough, but somebody reached out.
I'm not sure how those are installed.
I don't know if they're anchored. I don't know if they are.
They're, they're, they're bolt, not bolted, but chained to a tree.
Okay.
But I'd like to thank both of you. This is the type of thing we should be bringing up at these work sessions, not in regular city council, because that way you're basically doing one-on-one and you've got everybody here. And it, it makes things move a lot smoother. Thank you very, very much. Hopefully, we keep that precedent as we go forward. Anything else to move on?
Were we expecting Bobby Judge tonight or were?
I was going to send a message. I don't know if James got anything. I didn't get anything in a while.
I got some stuff in, in the box out there from Long Bush Truck and Tractor. Are we looking to buy a new truck or tractor?
I got the same thing too.
They're looking to sell you one too.
They're fixed.
Yeah, I understand. I didn't know if it was something we need to keep because they're looking to buy.
Hey, get your new ball cap. You need to buy one.
I know that the new, the, the tractor that Public Works was using to move the gravel around the ball field, I went up there, just kind of see how they were going. And they were working on the tractor, trying to get it spark. And Ms. Donna mentioned that that tractor has been around for a very, very long time. So the reason you're probably getting that is because, much like our leaf truck, the tractor's probably about ready to go the wayside.
Thank you.
And then one thing, if we, if we make these Monday meetings scheduled reoccurring.
Right.
Then I'm assuming they carry this, the attendance carries the same weight as the regular scheduled council meeting. Am I wrong on that?
I, I don't think that they would be considered to be regularly scheduled council meetings. So this is a work session.
Okay.
This is not one of these scheduled or later.
Okay, fair enough.
Our, our ordinance that was passed several years ago stated that regular, regular scheduled council meetings, if they miss three or more, their pay would be withheld. But I don't think, it didn't have any work session either because we didn't, we weren't doing work sessions that time. I think that's all that mentions regularly scheduled. Doesn't, doesn't mention call meetings or anything, just the regular scheduled.
Right.
Fair enough.
It was only required attendance.
I hate to take up your extra time, but it seems to be the best way to make sure we do business at a regular session.
That's not where I'm going with this.
So we should be able to go in hopefully and conduct a business meeting and get through.
Well, as long as, as long as you don't have to repeat tomorrow night, you know, is, is the thing. So, you know.
Well, there'll be some of that, I guess, on this go-around. So hopefully, we'll move on to the next level at some point in the future.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's good to be able to discuss this stuff. I think encourage your colleagues to participate as best you can. There's always so much you can do, so.
Indeed.
And thank everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.